Being here tonight. Before we begin, I want to thank a few folks for getting ready for tonight's hearing. Certainly the zoning team that's being led by Project Manager Louis Taber, Department of Building and Zoning Services Deputy Director Tony Sellebrizzi, our Planning Administrator Mark DeVillas. Thank you for being here to represent the departments and for all the work that's gone in already to this portion of legislation that will be coming before council. I also want to thank my council colleagues that are here tonight, certainly Councilmember Deakow, Councilmember Beatty. Councilmember Deakow has near full, perfect attendance with anything zoning related, so
I missed one.
Thank you for keeping that up. And certainly Councilmember Beatty's been with us all the way with everything zoning during his time in council. So appreciate you both being here tonight. Want to thank certainly our council staff, Kevin McCain from our Legislative Research Office for preparing your night, certainly CTV and our other folks that are helping to make this hearing work. Tonight, we're here to discuss the proposed Columbus growth strategy. I know that many people have been interested in the zone-in initiative to rezone and modernize our zoning code here in Columbus for the first time subsequently in 70 years. We passed the first phase of zone-in last summer. Additional phases will move forward in coming years. And tonight, the growth strategy is part of the initial framework and policymaking that will go into the next phase of zone-in. This follows the conclusion of a public comment period and surveys that city staff will report on here tonight. So appreciate the members of the public that have both been here tonight to engage here, but also so many of them have engaged already on this initiative, whether or not that was the first phase of zone-in, whether or not it was the survey and public comment period for the growth strategy here as well. As always, our public hearings here at council, you can livestream on CTV or council's Facebook or YouTube page. Also, an archive of this hearing will be posted on the city's YouTube page prior to after the event. I want to remind individuals that are here tonight, if you're interested in speaking, you can seek out Kevin McCain from the Legislative Research Office, gentleman who just raised his hand, let him know and he'll get you signed up to hear, speak here tonight. Before I turn it over to our presenters and administration, just want to pause and see if any of my council colleagues have any comments they'd like to make.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work and all the department's hard work. When you're on the outside, like I was just a few months ago, you just don't realize and appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. And I know I've been one that, you know, I think the first week I came in, why isn't it faster? Why isn't it faster? But then I took the time to educate myself and you guys took the time to educate me and I really appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Beatty. I think we've tried to move at a very deliberate pace as much as we can, but also wanted to make sure we're being mindful of bringing the community along with us to make sure that, you know, folks have really understand what these changes potentially mean for them, their neighborhood, the city, and certainly going into the future of Columbus. So it's an exciting time. So this is, as we mentioned, the subject tonight is to review that growth strategy that will, again, be an important piece of framework and policymaking that will lead us towards the next phase of zone-in. So with that, I'd love to turn over the floor to Louis Taber and Mark DeVillas from the administration, from the zoning team and our planning folks over in development. So with that, I'll hand it over to you guys. Thank you.
President Pro Tem, members of council, thank you for having me here today. So as Councilmember Dorans indicated, we are in the process of continuing the work of zone-in and we are here to have a public hearing about a major milestone in the work that we've been doing. So I have a timeline here for us right now. You can see that the project, as we all know, began back in 2021 where we did an assessment of our zoning code and it was found that we needed to update our zoning code. In 2024, we adopted the first phase of zone-in along the corridors. It was densifying the corridors and we had great success with that. We had very little public opposition, large public buy-in and support from the community. And we were led by these project goals that we have right here. So the project goals are the same for the whole project. They will be the same until zoning is completed. And it is modernize our zoning code to reflect our community's current and future needs, support growth that prioritizes environmental and economic sustainability to improve transit, encourage thoughtful investment in neighborhoods that have experienced racial and economic segregation, guide the design and development of main streets, neighborhoods, and activity centers, and ensure that the Columbus zoning code is fair, understandable, and accessible. Right? So Phase One was a big success, as I indicated. We had over 140 miles of corridors adopted, over 12,000 parcels throughout the city. We had over 8,000 surveys completed, six mixed-use zoning districts were created as well, ranging from our most intense, that is eight stories, from eight stories up to around 16, and our lowest intensity, which is up to four stories. And we allowed a greater number of permitted uses and we had robust design guidelines in, code guidelines in the code itself, standards, code standards, I apologize. All that being said, about 4.6% of the city was rezoned. So we have a lot of work left to do and a lot more of the city to rezone. So one thing I want to talk a little bit about is the difference between policy and code, right? Policy is aspirational. It's kind of as how we view or how we'd like the city to grow. Policy talks about things like the community developers should, or, you know, property owners should, or it is encouraged that they do things, while code is more of the required standards, right? It has to be, have a four-foot step, it has to have a 35-foot height. And so when we created our Phase One map, the state laws state that we have to have policy in place before we do our rezonings. And what my predecessor Kevin Kilbane did in these, or I apologize, Kevin Wheeler and the zoning team did is they looked at all of the area plans that we have in the city, of which we have 40. They looked at all these area plans and they looked at where did the land use recommendations say mixed use? And what they did is they then took those land use recommendations and those mapped areas, and then they created that Phase One map, right? The policy led to the zoning districts. The problem we have now is when we move away from those corridors, that policy basis kind of falls apart, right? We don't have robust policy basis. We have over 200 land use classifications in the city right now. And so it's different names, different definitions. We're lacking that kind of robust policy. And so that's what we're trying to do here, that we have to do in this phase, that we didn't have to do in Phase One, is we have to set a policy basis so we can move forward with our zone-in project. And to talk about that policy basis is the Planning Administrator, Mark DeVillas.
Thanks, Louis. President Pro Tem Dorans and Councilmembers Deakow, Beatty, and everybody here, appreciate the opportunity to talk. You know, thanks for your leadership on this. And as you know, you know, Louis and I are here representing really a broad team from Building and Zoning Services in the Development Department. As Louis put it, the growth strategy as proposed is filling a need that was identified, that we knew was needed as we got into Phase Two of zone-in. So these projects are intimately linked. One is to lead to the other. The first slide up here, we talk about our challenge, Louis mentioned it, is that we do not currently have the comprehensive land use policy in order to support the continued zoning reform that the city is undertaking. We have 40-plus area plans that are in place throughout the city that go back to 1994. These plans were created at different times, they serve different purposes, sometimes they may conflict with each other, they've served the given community at a given time, but they really didn't have one guiding force and one need, one connecting point between all of them. So without this unified citywide framework, it's harder to modernize the zoning code. We need the legal basis in order to move forward. The goal, then, of course, is a single citywide strategy that sets clear priorities for where and how Columbus grows. It connects housing, jobs, transportation, and infrastructure, so the city grows with a purpose and in a coordinated way. This is what we're after. The solution is the Columbus growth strategy. The growth strategy we're going to be bringing to City Council as an amendment to Columbus citywide planning policies, also known as C2P2. The strategy, the growth strategy or strategy, will establish a citywide land use plan. This, as far as we could tell, will be the first time that Columbus has had a citywide land use plan. We researched and at one point, we thought we were seeing semblances of a citywide land use plan that, like the zoning code, went back 70 years. But the more and more we looked, we saw studies, we saw recommendations, we never saw a citywide land use plan. We believed this would be the city's first. And this is the most significant element of the C2P2 amendment that we'll be bringing forward, and I'll talk about this. The C2P2 amendment will include a few things, but the most important part is the citywide land use plan. And it will be the policy foundation that is needed to continue zoning code reform for Phases Two and then Phases Three. It will also establish a policy basis that can guide capital planning, investment, and budgeting. There is existing language in C2P2 today that sort of hints at how the city should grow and where investment should incur and so forth. We're going with a relatively light touch with the amendments in those regards at this point because the most important part is that we get this land use plan in place. But we are going to create a vehicle by which we could build that out over time. Why does this matter? We've been saying, we need the citywide land use policy in order to update our land use plans and create the policy basis for zone-in. We give residents, businesses, and community partners a clear sense of what's supported and where transparency. Everybody will be able to go to one place and understand what the given recommendation is, what city staff is willing to support, or what issues might exist otherwise. The land use plan will work to facilitate connecting housing, jobs, transportation, and infrastructure in a coordinated way. Our mantra continues to be support housing of all varieties and sorts in all neighborhoods of the city. And again, the essential policy foundation for zone-in. This is sort of the table of contents of what the growth strategy includes. And the upper two parts, the vision for growth and guiding principles, is consistent with C2P2 today. They're big-picture ideas that sort of describe what the city should look like, the aspirational part, as Louis mentioned. The middle two pieces there, the Columbus land use plan and the land use policies, that's really the heart of the strategy. That is the engine. It is the land use plan citywide and associated policies. So like the zoning code that consists of both text and a map, the land use plan also consists of text, in this case, policy, and a map. And they work together to be the Columbus land use plan. And then design guidelines address sort of the look and feel of development. And we've been using a form of these design guidelines for years and have found them effective in not being onerous for developers, but yet helping to improve quality in neighborhoods throughout. The growth strategy would result into the adoption of the design guidelines citywide. Currently, they do not exist citywide. Just a few highlights of the Columbus land use plan, which has been online for weeks now. It is, one of the key elements is flexibility. And flexibility in regard to use and density, but more of a focus on design, on how the given development looks and feels. Encouraging of mixed use, and this is consistent with best practice for years here in Columbus and nationwide, that we should strive to have as strong of a mixed-use environment everywhere as we can. It encourages walkability. It creates a sense of place. Again, as mentioned, supporting housing options, more housing options throughout all areas of the city, in particular near jobs, transit, and amenities, and guidance on where older employment areas can evolve. So this could be a situation where the land use plan is looking at a 1980s-era office development that is really vacant today or not functioning, and the land use plan is recommending a mixed-use environment that maintains an element of jobs, but also allows for the inclusion of housing and perhaps limited amounts of retail. We also look at industrial areas throughout the city where we look to firm up industrial areas that are viable industrial and that are serving the city with stronger standards to protect neighborhoods, but also providing a pathway for older industrial areas that may longer not be viable and what can they evolve into in order to be better contributors to the neighborhood. This is just an image of the map. Again, it's been online for weeks, but just wanted to show, you know, one image of this is what the current map looks like. This map addresses retroactively Phase One and then Phase Two. So between Phase One and Phase Two, this map represents upwards of 50% of the city. We will update the map when we go on to tackle Phase Three. So currently, our intent, and Louis can comment on this, that we would follow up this land use plan with the zoning action, starting immediately in 2026, with the goal to bring you zoning reform for Phase Two in the summer of 2026, perhaps July. We would immediately go into Phase Three, developing land use recommendations for the rest of the city, and then the rezoning action that would follow it. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Louis.
One final comment on the map is that yesterday, the Downtown Commission voted to recommend in favor of the Columbus growth strategy and adoption of mixed-use three in the downtown district as well. So we will have that center area and we can have a complete citywide land use map when this process is complete. So I just wanted to explain quickly how the policy will turn into zoning. So back in June, we came in for a resolution of support from council, and it was just one solid color map, a blue map. It was blue and then there were gray areas. The gray areas are going to be Phase Three. We haven't addressed those yet. In late 2026, or 2026 and 2027, we'll be focusing on those areas. But this map just showed what was in and what was out, what was up for consideration. Then, working with our zoning advisory committee and doing internal analysis, we created an initial land use map for the community to react to, and it had three colors on it. The green was mixed use, that blue was industrial warehouse, and the yellow was business and institutional campus. And this is what was the survey, where we had our 3,000 survey responses, is what we went to the workshops, the pop-up events, this is where we engaged the public on this map. And what we asked them was two things. Do you support the use? So do you support mixed use in this area? Or do you support industrial in this area, or business and institutional campus? Or would you rather this area be neighborhood? And we leave it in Phase Three. And then the intensity. Do you support mixed use up to four stories in height? Do you support mixed use up to seven stories in height? And then do you support mixed use eight and above? Right? So three intensities. We also asked industrial warehouse, do you support heavier, light, industrial? And then we asked in business and institutional campus, do you support those three heights as well, up to four, up to seven, and eight and above? So we took all that feedback and we made substantial changes based off that community feedback. And now we have the map that you have before you. If you look at it, we still just have one solid color for industrial warehouse and business and institutional campus. We're not going to drill down on those until we get to the zoning portion. But we did take those three height preferences and we assigned mixed-use districts. Mixed-use one, that goes up to four stories. Mixed-use two, that goes up to seven stories. And mixed-use three, that is eight and above. So it aligns with what the community recommendations were. We're hoping to get council adoption of this five-color map right now, which will lay the policy basis for the zoning, and then we can begin working with our consultant on creating the zoning districts and assigning zoning districts. So in Phase One, we had five, six mixed-use districts. Some of those will transfer over into these areas. So if you have mixed-use three, that could be either Regional Activity Center or Urban Core. Your mixed-use two can be Urban Center or Community Activity Center. Mixed-use one could be UGN1, UGN2, or an additional lower mixed-use zoning district that we're working on right now. So the policy leads directly to the zoning. One last thing to keep in mind is this conversation is not over with the community. As we look at this, this is setting the policy basis, kind of an aspirational basis. If we engage, we're going to continue to engage the community through 2026 on the zoning districts that we create. Do you support UGN1 in this mixed-use district? Or do you support something lower, UGN2 or lower mixed-use? And it doesn't always have to align 100%. There might be areas that we have for mixed-use two on the policy map, but we might end up, based off community input, assigning a zoning district that aligns with mixed-use one. We have an aspiration that over time, this could become mixed-use two, right? That over time, that kind of development could be supported. And if a developer wants to propose something taller, we have the policy foundation, but there will still be that community engagement process where they'd be going through a variance or rezoning, and the community could have input. So just that slight detail. And as we indicated before, the Columbus growth strategy will be subject to annual review, and it allows for ongoing updates that meet the city's and neighborhood needs. So we can engage with our area commissions and say, how does this? It's going to be more of a living document than our current area plans, which are adopted and then they, you know, they sit kind of in a stagnant state. We can create this kind of updated process. And as we see, area commissions will have input on map changes in their area, and they will continue to review variances and rezonings to the existing zoning code.
I told Louis I wanted to jump in at this point, and I'm going to. I'll try to be quick. But I needed to comment here on the notion of the growth strategy being subject to annual review. And the Columbus land use plan will indeed supersede land use recommendations from the various 40-plus plans that exist today. And we've been out to area commissions, particularly in the last month, but over the last several months, making that point and stressing that point because it represents change for the city. It represents change for all of us. It represents change for how we do business and how area commissions will have an opportunity to engage on rezonings and variances. And because of that change, of course, it could be a tense moment, and there's various concerns and so forth. And so we've tried to be very explicit about it. And in our messaging, what we've said is, we need to do business a new way. That we can't do land use planning neighborhood by neighborhood in this city anymore. And the evidence is that if I'm in the Westland area, my plan is from 1994, and it hasn't changed since. And it's city policy today in that area. And we have tried to keep up with the pace. And in 2018, we really took our biggest bite. You'll see this in the legislation when it comes your way. We took a big bite and we got about 25% of the city done. But we found that we really can't sustain the neighborhood by neighborhood approach, and it's not appropriate because it does not have the quote-unquote "North Star," if you will, that guides what we're trying to do. There needs to be done in a coordinated fashion. So that means change and it creates, you know, concern. But this point that Louis made here, the second bullet, is we're going to then update this land use plan on an annual basis. We're committed to doing that. So it won't be 1994 to today before you have an opportunity to get fresh land use guidance for your given neighborhood. So I had to comment, I've been working on these plans for 22 years, and I think that they brought a lot of good to a lot of neighborhoods. They've been effective tools in these neighborhoods. But I've learned and I've seen over time is, this approach doesn't function for this city. We need a new approach. And so this is it. I'll give it back to Louis.
No, absolutely. Great points. So I just wanted to comment on the public input update. So we've been doing a lot of robust public engagement since June. We had over 3,200 survey responses. We had four community workshops, one in the north, one in the south, east, and west, and we tried to reach out to all areas of the community. After that, we did 26 pop-up events where we engaged with over 2,078 individuals. These aren't people who were just walking by or people who were at the event. These are people who we engaged with and spoke to and had conversations about what we were doing. We had stakeholder meetings with key partners and institutions. We had 20 meetings with these individuals to get their feedback. We were just trying to see whether there are any red flags, were we proposing anything that didn't make sense to them? And feedback was generally supportive. It made sense to them. We had our area commission engagement. We've done over 100 presentations since this project began, providing them feedback, letting them know that we were going to be doing a citywide land use plan and that we would be coming back with a citywide land use plan. We did a downtown open house. We had an information station in our building where you could do a reservation for a one-hour period with one of our planners and go through and just pick our brains and ask all of our questions, the questions that they might have. We recently had a public comment period where we were soliciting additional feedback on the proposal. We had direct newsletters through GovDelivery. We have over 3,000 subscribers, paid and organic posts. And overall, public input has been largely supported between 65 and 75% of our proposal as a whole. So large, large numbers of support. So just our calendar, November and December, our public comment period ended on November 9th. On November 13th, we got a support from the Development Commission. They recommended to support the adoption of the Columbus growth strategy. And here we are at our public hearing. On December 8th, we had the first, we will have the first reading of the Columbus growth strategy, and then on the 15th, the second reading of the Columbus growth strategy. So we look for your support on this initiative, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you both. I appreciate the presentation. I want to pause and see if my council colleagues have any questions for you all before I get to mine.
More of a comment. I appreciate the amount of time that you guys have spent, particularly with our area commissions. I live in the far west side area. We all have had a lot of conversations with the community. It was really nice to see my neighborhood on a map up here because we don't usually get highlighted. But I'm in a community that is actually primarily industrial and warehouse, and we've got a lot of farmland. So a lot of the zoning things from zone-in didn't apply. And so it's great to see engagement about what a lot of people would find boring, industrial and warehouse. But that's where I live. And so I appreciate the time that you have spent because you all have been back several times with the area commission and have engaged in really quality dialogue. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beatty, do you have anything at this time?
Yes. Just briefly. Again, thank you for all your work. So again, clarify with, to me, what happens with those old area plans and all that? Is it just?
We, the, so we have a variety of plans, and some of them, our most recent ones, really are very focused on land use. And the land use recommendation from the plan that we're going to be bringing to you here in December would replace those, that part of the map. It won't make it go away altogether because we still need to do Phase Three. So if I'm in southeast, which is a plan that we did in 2018, and there's, the part of the map that we're bringing in December will replace any affected area in their area. But we haven't gotten into neighborhoods yet, so the old plan will kind of continue to make sure that we still have some recommendation for that area, if it makes sense. So there's, A, the old plans will remain because until we complete this process, we need citywide coverage. Another element is some of our plans address things that are outside of land use. They may have mobility-related recommendations, they may have recommendations that relate to the environment. And we've realized that we don't need those plans to go away. If a community or city staff finds them of some use, they could continue to exist. And so it's a little bit of a muddy water, but the reality is, is that the land use recommendations from the old plans will be replaced by this land use plan.
Okay, so if I'm one seeking to, you know, do a development, let's say, so let's say that we're in the time, future that this has passed, and I'm seeking to do a development in the new, you know, in the area.
Yeah.
And so if I was on a corridor, I'm looking to Phase One, okay? I'm looking to zone in Phase One, I'm assuming a corridor. But if I'm off the corridor and I go before an area commission, are they looking to, where are they looking? Are they looking to, are looking to the, to the plan? Are they looking to, are they looking to the old plan? They looking to C2P2 or where?
The growth strategy will be, will be the place.
Okay.
And it, most of our users at this point get online, and we have applications where you could do an address search, it'll bring you to a property, and it'll pop up and it'll say, this is what the growth strategy says. And then it'll have a link to a document. That's going to be the guide, is the growth strategy. That's really what we're after. The old plan may be a document that kind of lives somewhere and that if there's some usefulness that the community sees in it, they could go to it. But if I'm a user and I want to know, I want to pursue a zoning, or if I'm an owner, they're going to find the growth strategy recommendation.
Okay. And then to Mr. Taber, when you put up the picture of the four maps, and we don't necessarily have to put that up, I'm trying to get some clarity here. When you were speaking about how some of the designations from Phase One would be integrated to...
Some of the mixed use.
Right, right, over there. Would that only be at this point if it's on one of the original corridors? Or would there be some instance where a street that's off the previously designated corridors could have that type of designation?
Yeah, so it really depends. Keep in mind, like I said in Phase One, they really looked at what the... Keep in mind, like I said in Phase 1, they really looked at what the area plans recommended. So major corridors like 161 or Hilliard Rome Road, these are major corridors in the city. They were not included in Phase 1 because they had a commercial recommendation. They didn't have a mixed use recommendation. So with the adoption of this policy, we're going to look at that and say, these are areas that most likely support mixed use 1, 2, or 3. They weren't included the first time because the policy recommendation wasn't there. But now we have the policy recommendation. And so we can put those zoning districts there where they probably could have gone the first time if we had had the policy recommendation. There are additionally secondary corridors that weren't included in the first phase because it was very limited, as I've indicated. And so we have included some areas that we think could support, like a lower slung mixed use, kind of like an emerging mixed use perhaps, something very low scale. That wasn't included in the first phase because the first phase had very big kind of mixed use. There's going to be very seldom area, very few areas where we apply, for example, like a, an urban core or anything like that, or a regional activity center. But there will be additional areas on these primary corridors that now we will have the policy basis to put them. And we would have done it the first time if we could have, but we didn't have it. And that's why we're doing the policy first.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have something to add?
No, no, thank you, Councilmember.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. So just a couple of overall questions, just to make sure that the details don't get lost here. I think Councilmember Beatty was getting at some of these. So we talked about those land use plans, those area plans being in place. So we're talking about like getting away from that essentially, right? So we're talking about rather than having these sort of individual plans and individual areas of the city that again, take a significant amount of staff time to update and to create in the first place and then update. The shift here is to say, hey, rather than doing these individual areas, let's do the whole city. Let's, and particularly right now, what we're talking about here is the areas that potentially are going to be included in Phase 2. So we're talking about, again, land use recommendations for those areas. So again, to be very clear, we're not talking about zoning districts here. That, that's what would come in Phase 2 of Zonen. So what we're talking about here is sort of the, the policy behind of generally, what do we want these recommendations to look like within these areas? Is that sort of a fair assessment?
Absolutely.
So, and again, when you talk about having that annual update, this is something that I think really, really stands out in this process right now. Because when you talk about the oldest plan that we have in place goes back to the 90s, right? And the newest plan we have goes back to 2018. So even in our newest plan, we're talking about seven years old, when we think about what has happened in Columbus in the last seven years, there's a big jump in just things like Link Us, right? How we're thinking about mobility within the city. When we think about the growth of Columbus that has happened within those, that seven years, those things are not reflected even in a plan that is our newest, right?
Absolutely. I mean, well put. And this, this will be a generational shift in how Columbus planning plans in this city. And, and again, the change, you know, creates anxiety for some folks and we understand that. But what Zonen, it would, the recognition that we needed a policy basis for Phase 2 opened this broader question and recognition of, no, we need to change the way we do business for just the reasons you stated. And I think one thing we've realized, Louis has certainly experienced and we all have in recent weeks and months, is we need to continue to message to communities of, that doesn't mean we're going away. That this actually provides a better opportunity for you to engage and get updated land use recommendations and policy guidance for your community over time. So everything you said, 100%.
So one thing I want to point out, and I do think you, we mentioned in the presentation, but again, I think just to highlight to make sure that folks really understand sort of the, the big shift we're talking about here, is that one of the things that I hear all the time, when we talk about day-to-day rezonings, you know, when we're here at 6:30 on Monday nights watching paint dry, talking about parking spots and setbacks and screening and all these kinds of things, one of the things I hear continually from residents is that, hey, new growth is happening, new development's happening, some folks like it, some folks don't like it. But also, isn't it the city's responsibility to make sure that we're making capital budget investments that are reflective of that growth? So where we see new housing developments, you know, where's the traffic improvements? Where's the sidewalks, right? And oftentimes, you know, one of the things that we say is that, you know, that type of growth sort of drives our thinking on where those investments go. But that process is not always coordinated, right? So when we think about the need for more water and sewer upgrades in an area that may be more commercial or industrial, and again, at the same time, thinking about what we're doing for traffic or sidewalks or mobility in other areas of the city. You know, the, the left hand doesn't always talk to the right hand when we're talking about things at the local government level. And I just wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to talk a little bit more about how this also shifts that. When we're talking about having land use plans that say, you know, here's what we think the future of this area looks like over the next year, five years, 10 years, 30 years. And what are we doing to make sure that our capital budget, so a lot of folks I think that are paying attention to this, certainly here with us tonight, know what I mean by that. But our capital budget of the city is our budget that, you know, makes investments in physical infrastructure, right? So it's different from the operating budget, which typically pays for our people and operations at the city, our employees. But the capital budget is about, you know, roads, sewer, sidewalks, you know, rec centers, police stations, fire stations, that, like real physical infrastructure. Can you talk about how this is going to shift, how we sort of make that capital budget investment, which again, I think gets back to that sort of day-to-day, you know, frustration that I think a lot of residents rightfully have around new development coming to their area? And where is the, where's the investment to sort of match that for them?
It is, I mean, thanks for that question. And it is a tough, tough topic. And, and this is the arena where we've said, the growth strategy at this point is taking a relatively light touch. Our focus is, our need was in the land use plan. But if I'm going to plan for investment in the Westland area, am I, right now, I have a 1994, none of us are going to use a 1994 document in order to plan for infrastructure improvements for a neighborhood. That's what we have. If we have updated land use guidance that says, this is where the city is growing, the intensity is going to be here, it's going to be less intense here, this is going to be industrial, this is going to be office, now we could begin to have a conversation with the other departments and say, this is the city's land use plan, now we should begin to align investment with that land use plan. This opens the door for that conversation. And it'll be incumbent on the planning staff as well as the, the city generally in order to try to bring that to bear.
Thank you for that. And I think this is something that, there is so much hunger out there with community members just about, you're able, at times, through that sort of day-to-day zoning process, sometimes to bring some of these things. But it's much more of a patchwork compared to a much bigger philosophical change, which I think the city needs and is ready for, and we should make sure that we're trying to deliver for our residents. I did want to, you know, we're talking about two different things here a little bit. We're talking about the growth strategy, which is that land use recommendation with an anticipation of how that then gets used for, for Phase 2 of Zonen. We've talked a lot about commercial and industrial and some folks may say, hey, I thought Zonen was really laser-focused on bringing new housing to Columbus considering the challenges that we have in the housing market to help stabilize housing costs for, for our residents. And that is still like key, key focus of both the, the growth strategy, but also what will ultimately become Phase 2 of Zonen. Can you talk a little bit about like why the, the focus on industrial and commercial here, considering that, you know, I think folks would think about, you know, you know, things like Eastland Mall, for example, where by the time, you know, things were too far gone there, that became, you know, a blight on that community. And we were not necessarily being thoughtful about, hey, what is the future of retail? You know, people don't shop the same way that they did even five or 10 years ago. And what does that really mean for these areas? To make sure that we're being thoughtful about, if something's going to change in these, in these markets, what are we trying to encourage to make sure that we're getting out ahead of those changes so that we don't have, you know, a building, you know, get closed up and become a blight and, you know, sort of drag parts of that neighborhood down? How, how does this sort of fit into that from a philosophical standpoint of what we're trying to get ahead as we think about changes in the commercial or retail or industrial?
I mean, and I'll comment again, and Louis, jump in after I say what I say, is, you know, I reflect back on, you know, my colleague, you know, Kevin Wheeler, our former project manager, and a lot of consternation that went into Zonen in the early stages of, how are we going to do this? And we observed other cities, some of our peer cities that had success and some that had failure. And some of that had failure really bit off too much all at once. And I think a really important decision that was made in Columbus based on leadership was to phase this effort, the phasing. And Phase 1 was the immediate and pressing need that capacity was in the corridors. And those of us that were there and waiting for the analysis for the consultants were very concerned about what that analysis would do and then we were very pleased to hear that 88,000 unit.
I do want to move on to the public comment portion of tonight's hearing. So we have, I believe, 14 or 15 different public speakers. So we've got a lot of folks here tonight. So I'm going to call names and I'll ask folks that come up, I'll try to limit their comments as much to three minutes as possible, just so we're being respectful of folks' time. I will announce someone, come up with the podium. I will then announce the second speaker. So if you wouldn't mind just waiting over there, just so we're, we're keeping things moving here. I will ask, if you are here representing an organization, just let us know who that, that may be. And also, if I pronounce your name incorrectly, please let me know. Certainly never intentional, but every now and again, I take a swing and a miss on how to, how to pronounce someone. So I apologize if I get that wrong. But want to thank so many folks for being engaged here tonight and certainly excited to have this amount of public speakers that have joined us here tonight. So our first speaker will be Ms. Lori Doolin. And then after Lori, we'll have Elizabeth Reed.
You did pronounce my name correctly. Thank you.
Excited the first one I got. Thank you. All downhill from here, I'm sure.
I appreciate it. Do I wait for Councilmember Beatty to come in or? Nope, okay. Well, thank you, President Protem and esteemed councilmembers for entertaining my testimony this evening. My name is Lori Doolin and I'm the principal of Our Lady of Bethlehem School, which I will call OLB in the interest of brevity after this. Our school is located at 4567 Olentangie River Road in Columbus, right at the Henderson and Olentangie River Road intersection off of 315. Thank you for holding this hearing and for your thoughtful consideration for our city. My reason for coming before you, I feel our school especially is at a pivotal point as you consider Columbus's growth strategy and prepare for Phase 2 of Zonen. OLB and its stakeholders are extremely concerned about the proposed rezoning of the land in and around our beautiful schools. Specifically, seven parcels of land commonly known as the Zimmerman property now set likely for mixed use 2 in Phase 2 of Zonen. I have worked and talked to the esteemed people at the Department of Zoning. Our concern extends even beyond those parcels in that general area as most of the land, including the land that my school is on, would be mixed use 2 in that corridor under the same recommendation. But I would like to point out that the land I'm most concerned about comprises the entire southern and western border of our two parcels. So I just have three things to convey to you this evening. First, I'd like to tell you just a bit about OLB. Probably don't know about us. We are a school. And how our mission has impacted the Columbus community and what kind of neighbors and landowners we are. Since 1956, we're in our 70th year, we've had thousands of children and their families who have attended and benefited from our school. Many of them are now good, gracious, contributing citizens that still live in and around the greater Columbus area, positively, positively impacting our city and the well-being of our citizens. Ours are the youngest learners in the city, birthed through kindergarten, the most critical years for brain formation and development. Their safety, growth, engagement with the world around them is tantamount to all else. It's the responsibility of any community to prioritize schools where they are and what is around or near them. We're a private accredited school with about 120 students from 85 families who come from all areas of the city. Many not from the immediate area around our school, but they come by choice for its high-quality care and education. Most drive and do not walk. It's not a neighborhood school. Unlike other schools, we operate year-round with a summer program that benefits students through 8th grade. We are open Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 6:00, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The founders of our school knew and were friends with and neighbors with the Zimmerman family. They lived, worked alongside of, and looked out for each other for decades. We respect them and their rights as landowners. We are also landowners and any actions we seek come a place, come from a place of moral and civic duty and a source of our brothers and sisters and land and nature that grows and lives on it. OLB and its stakeholders, as I said, were very concerned and I just want to, can I? I'm sorry. Say why we are so concerned. First, safety. The traffic in that area is already impenetrable. Adding construction activity, noise, overall density from physical structures and human traffic is a threat to the security of our school. Think about if you put a seven-story structure for mixed use 2 overlooking our playground. Accessibility, it's an insanely busy corridor, history of accidents with fatalities, exacerbated congestion. It impacts our operations, our arrival, coming onto property, leaving property, emergency services. It could seriously impact our enrollment. The loss of green space, threats to nature and environment would be substantial and significant. So we do have apartments that are to our north and quite distant. Those are low-rise, established for years. But again, the rezoning and subsequent development of the Zimmerman property would be different and so detrimental. What we're asking of you, and I understand the need for the zoning by neighborhood, if you came to our school and thought about mixed use 2 surrounding it, you would be appalled. I ask that we at least punt these land parcels to Zone, to Phase 3 so that we have time, we have some things in play that we would like to investigate. We want to work with the Zimmerman as land, Zimmerman's as landowners. Please understand that we're talking about a school. We all know that threats to schools come in many forms, varieties, and situations. Developing this land in a way puts our school and our students at greater risk. I thank you very much for this opportunity to advocate for our students, our school, the neighborhood, and Columbus in general. And thank you.
Yep, thank you for being here tonight. When we talk about specific parcels, you know, we're talking about the land use here, then when we move to the next phase, you know, that's where we're going to want to make sure that, that kind of public engagement, we're talking about what district may or may not be applied. And when we talk about Zonen generally, just to say it out loud, I mean, the intention is to rezone the whole city, right? So we did about 4.5% in the first phase. This will be a little over 40% and then the final phase will do everyone else. So I think, you know, most folks understand we're trying to modernize that code from, right, getting away from just one individual project, you know, kind of rezonings to the whole thing. So advocacy, well taken. And certainly we're going to have a lot of, a lot of runway in front of us to have some of those discussions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth Reed from the Southwest Area Commission. I do want to, I know we've got a number of area commissioners who are signed up here tonight, so thank you for being here. And I know we've got a couple who are not signed up who are in the audience. So thank you for all our commissioners, either who are testifying or here tonight for the service of the city. So our next speaker after Ms. Reed will be Jason Sudi. After you.
Right. Good evening, Council President Protem Rob Dorans, Chair of the Zoning Committee and esteemed Councilmember. Thank you for considering public feedback on the proposed Columbus Growth Strategy Policy. I'm Liz Reed of the Southwest Area Commission. Our commission met yesterday and are offering this testimony regarding the proposed strategy. The Southwest Area Commission's vision is to create safe community spaces where our neighbors can come together. This, the Growth Strategy Policy aligns with our advocacy for the Southwest area, specifically the focus on connectivity to parks, open space, and recreational opportunities through universally designed streets, sidewalks, bikeways, multi-use and multi-use trail networks. And by prioritizing public transit that offers reliable access to jobs, housing, education, and healthcare. We also align with and understand the need for more housing to meet the needs of our, of our growing community. In the Southwest area, we believe the proposed strategy recommended zoning map misses some opportunities for housing in a corridor that has easy access to highways, but at the same time is isolating to residents who don't have an automobile. Most importantly is the area just south of Green Lawn Avenue along Harmon Road. Currently, this is a neglected area and is sent, is central to the part of, and is central to part of a, a census tract that has the lowest life expectancy in the state of Ohio at 60 years of age. For years, the Southwest Area Commission has been advocating for changes in this area. We have had success with the city of Columbus, devoting attention to McCoy Park, where the city plans to create an outdoor therapeutic recreational and community park. And with the need for retention water, Columbus Water and Power plans to add an Antrim Park-like lake to that area. Additionally, the city purchased a building on Green Lawn Avenue that will be converted to a community facility, serving residents in the surrounding neighborhoods. We also have had success with Franklin County, who will be adding sidewalk and multi-use path on Brown Road from Frank to Stimel. In recognition of these planned changes and considering the practice... In recognition of these planned changes and considering the proximity less than five miles from downtown, this is the biggest area near downtown that does not have housing for residential. The Southwest Area Commission proposes that the area currently designated for industrial, located south of Green Lawn, west of I-71, east of Brown Road, and north of Frank, be reassigned to mixed use one on the CGS map. Further, to fulfill the stated goals in the Growth Strategy, the City of Columbus should consider changes to the current infrastructure to allow for safe multimodal connectivity to the area, specifically Harmon Avenue north and along Mound Street to Cooper Stadium, and south of Green Lawn to Hart Road. These changes would connect Sullivan Gardens Recreation Center, Sullivan Elementary School, and planned development of Cooper Stadium, and planned development at McCoy Park, and then ensure that connectivity leads to downtown through multi-use paths. This would bring much-needed connectivity to this part of the city in which a third of its residents don't drive. Further, with the amazing park and recreational opportunities unfolding in this area, individuals and families with a limited mobility could be drawn to live in a new communities designed well. Picture an area designated as Mixed Use One, a community that is developed focused on underserved residents with adaptive needs, where residents could live, roll, and walk to an adaptive park, Columbus Community Center, small markets, healthcare, and other amenities. The goal would be to not only improve life expectancy in the area, but to improve the quality of life for current and future residents. Overall, we agree with the policy if this map, if the mapped area and a few other Southwest area parcels are changed from industrial to mixed use residential one. Please be aware that for this change to be actualized, the city may need to invest in sidewalks and multi-use pathways in already-developed areas in and adjacent to this corridor to achieve the connectivity that is envisioned by the Columbus Growth Policy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate the very actionable suggestions as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next would come for council is Mr. Jason Sudi, followed by Commissioner Kathy Green.
Thank you, Council, for having me. I am going to disappoint you by not having any actionable solutions and speak more in general about my support for the land use growth strategy and the overall Zone In process. I'm a 30-year resident of Columbus, almost a 30-year practicing urban planner in the central Ohio region, and I've had the opportunity to work on corridor studies, comprehensive plans, area plans, a lot of transportation plans, rezoning processes for entire cities, and also taught a class at Ohio State in the Required Program for City and Regional Planning, or land use and zoning, or an instrumental part of that for over a decade. Now, why am I telling you all this? Not to pad my resume, but to explain how difficult it is for practicing city planners, people who are trained in understanding land use and zoning, to work within the context of the current fragmented neighborhood, district, historic district plans, and the complex code that we have. In my role as the Chairman of the Italian Village Commission, where I've been serving for over 20 years, in that time, we have had to issue recommendations on zoning tens of times and recommendations on variances hundreds of times, really a little bit by the seat of our pants. We have certainly guidelines in our district that are very valuable. What we don't have is an overarching land use plan that we can really use to understand if we're doing the right thing. Now, we think we've done the right thing, and I think history has borne that in general the neighborhoods turned out very well. However, there are a lot of difficulties that we face in order to get to that point, and in other places where there are less established standards and guidelines, it could be very difficult. I was recently working on a project on one of the Lincoln, Lincoln Corridors, collecting all of the area plans in order to describe what was in place, and it was hard. And I think I know what I'm doing, and for someone who doesn't do this every day, it would be extraordinarily difficult. So I think in the big picture, this is a vital, important step, going back, really, decades, and certainly as far back as 2019, when the corridor concept study was adopted as part of the Insight 2050 by Morpsey. I was lucky enough to work on that, and I know one of our recommendations was specifically to take this approach. And it's always great when you're a planner and something you recommend actually gets put into place. So the last thing I'll say is, the city and the staff has done a really systematic, wise job of approaching this, doing four and a half percent of the city, the part that is most influential in the high-capacity transit corridors, and as someone who's on the practicing planning side, it has worked, and that's been very successful. Now we can extrapolate that and find the other tools that are necessary for us to continue our sustained growth and meet the goals of the overall region as we continue to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next speaker coming for council is Commissioner Kathy Green. After Kathy, we will have Carly Booze. Welcome back to council.
Thank you, Council President Protam Dorans, Councilmember Day Akhaur, and city staff for supporting this public hearing. My name is Kathy Green, I reside on East Whittier Street on the Columbus South Side. I'm the Vice Chair and Zoning Chair of the Columbus South Side Area Commission, and I do want to note that we did pass a letter of support last night at our Area Commission meeting for the Columbus Growth Strategy. Tonight, though, I am speaking as a resident. I first want to acknowledge the public engagement to date for Zone In Phase Two specifically and the Columbus Growth Strategy more generally. A public meeting was held at Buckeye Middle School and a pop-up information session at the Columbus Library South High Branch, both on the far South Side. A walking tour of the South Side manufacturing area around South Ohio and Freibus Roads was also held in recent months. Columbus's South Side is currently covered by the Near South Side Plan from 2011 and the South Side Plan from 2014, and the Columbus South Side Area Commission was an early adopter of the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies from 2018. These plans have served to guide development but have become outdated and out of sync with the Zone In initiative. Zone In Phase One covered the main mixed-use corridors on the South Side, including South High Parsons, Lockborn, and Livingston Avenue. For Phase Two, and in alignment with the proposed Columbus Growth Strategy, secondary mixed-use corridors included are Whittier, Thurman, Freibus, South Ohio, Champion, and additional parts of Lockborn Road. Nationwide Children's Hospital is currently covered by a commercial-plan district, would be included in the proposed business and institutional campus use category. And portions of Columbus's South Side currently zoned manufacturing are targeted for higher-density mixed use. Many of the current manufacturing properties don't represent the highest and best use and include things like lay-down yards. And, you know, I resonated a lot with what Liz was saying about the Southwest Side as well. I anticipate the changes in the city planning policies on Columbus's South Side to allow existing residential neighborhoods to retain their neighborhood character while allowing for an increased variety of housing on the secondary commercial corridors and within areas previously designated for manufacturing. This will provide more amenities and access to jobs, expanding economic development. It will allow infrastructure investments to be made in a more focused and efficient manner, will guide growth appropriately to the benefit of Columbus's South Side. Again, thank you for your commitment to encouraging responsible growth, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't think I have. Welcome back to.
Thank you, President Protam and Chair Dorans, and Madam Councilmember. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I am proud to speak on behalf of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio in support of the Columbus Growth Strategy. I also want to acknowledge that these sentiments were previously shared with Mayor Gethers' administration, and we appreciate the ongoing and massive, multifaceted work of both of your bodies to reduce housing costs here in central Ohio. AHACO knows that when land use laws and policies no longer reflect resident needs or economic realities, affordability suffers first. Unnecessary red tape adds cost without value, artificial scarcity drives up prices, outdated mandates supplant consumer choice, and a system that is dependent on variances or exceptions constraints access and impairs innovation. When AHACO assesses land use opportunities, we are always guided by the following values that reflect central Ohio's shared priorities. That the end result is achieved through a robust engagement process with diverse feedback loops and transparent discussion of affordability. That the end result is just and explicitly rejects a history of exclusion and segregation. That the result is procedurally sound, reflecting not just modern policy but streamlined and efficient processes. That the result is a unified and synthesized document that reflects all elements of housing creation from zoning to design to funding sustainability. That the result binds, or pardon me, builds upon precedent incorporating and honoring plier planning work, and that the result is responsive to today's demands, advancing affordability, walkability, and accessibility throughout the region. Upon review of the latest draft of the Columbus Growth Strategy, AHACO believes it lays a visionary foundation for the future, not only incorporating these values but translating those values into actionable progress. It reflects a clear mandate to create diverse and ample housing ecosystems, to support equitable transit-oriented design, environmental stewardship, and to empower residents to play an active role in the evolution of their communities. Not only, pardon me, are these principles reflective of national best practices that are already lowering housing costs in other jurisdictions, but we also know that these goals are supported by a supermajority of our neighbors here in central Ohio, as documented by our recent community survey called "Overwhelming." As such, I want to once again reiterate our organization's support for the Columbus Growth Strategy. We remain confident that this work, especially when combined with other elements of an overarching housing policy like the city's Affordable Housing Bond Package, continued investments and protections for fair housing, an adequate and ample homeless response system, and homeownership supports, will continue to expand affordability and protect our residents. So once again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to share our feedback, and thank you for your continued efforts to model progress and solutions for other communities here in Ohio and across the country.
Thank you, Director, I appreciate it, all of your engagement throughout this whole process, so glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Haynes, and then after him we will have Ms. Carly Miller.
My name is Daniel Haynes, I'm a managing member of the Columbus Architectural Studio, a practicing architect here in Columbus, a resident, and I'm also serve on the Executive Committee for the Columbus Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. I'm here tonight to speak as a citizen who cares deeply about the city's growth. Columbus needs clearer, more predictable tools to guide that growth. A citywide land use plan provides that clarity. It gives residents, architects, developers, a transparent sense of what the city will support on any given site, land use density and design. That helps projects move forward with fewer surprises and reduces the friction that often slows good work. I want to focus on housing in Columbus. Columbus continues to grow, yet we don't, we're not producing enough homes to keep up with that demand. That shortfall is pushing up costs and making it hard for people to live nearer where they work. The draft land use plan and the broader Zone In reforms are essential steps towards changing that. They support mixed-use neighborhoods, open pathways for aging offices and industrial sites to transition to new uses and to expand the range of housing types we can deliver across the city. This work will not solve every challenge, but it will give Columbus the policy foundations we need to grow responsibly, with more housing options, stronger neighborhoods, and a clearer planning process for everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your efforts on this work.
Thank you very much, I appreciate being here. Again, our next speaker coming for council is Carly Miller, and after Carly we will have Mr. Ryan Castle. Welcome back to council.
Thank you, President Protam Dorans, esteemed councilmember. My name is Carly Miller, and I am speaking on behalf of National Church Residences. Headquartered here in central Ohio, National Church Residences is the nation's largest nonprofit provider of affordable senior housing. In the City of Columbus alone, we have developed, own, and operate over 2,000 units in 26 senior and permanent supportive housing communities. Each day, we touch the lives of nearly 5,000 City of Columbus residents through housing, hospice, and home care services. National Church Residences thanks the City of Columbus for its thoughtful work on the proposed Columbus Growth Strategy. Our region's continued evolution is poised to bring many benefits to our community. Perhaps the most anticipated is a strong and resilient economy that allows our children to find their dream jobs without leaving their hometowns, and ensures we continue to offer the quality of life that Ohioans deserve, rich with family and culture. And while a buoyant economy is universally welcomed, we also know that for Columbus's growth to unlock something truly powerful, we must be planful and proactive about ensuring these benefits accrue to all in our community. That's why we are proud to see housing sufficiency taking such a prominent position in both our civic dialogue and our policymaking. For decades, our work at National Church Residences has reinforced for us the notion that abundant, accessible, affordable housing is central to a healthy community. Through dignified housing, we thrive, and through connected communities, we flourish. Over the past five years, we have preserved or added over 1,000 units in the City of Columbus, representing over $170 million in construction value. We've had the momentum because of tools like Zone In, creative financing like bond packages, and tax abatements. We work nationally, and we've found that other communities should look to Columbus as an example of how to mobilize in this way. Specifically, we believe that the Columbus Growth Strategy reflects a clear commitment to growing our city in a way that serves people first, every neighbor, at every age, and of every ability. The Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio shows that our housing gap now touches 52,000 severely cost-burned families in our county every day. The Columbus Growth Strategy not only puts us on a path to closing this gap, but also envisions a future where our seniors remain welcomed and supported as they age. The foresight to build mixed-use communities allows for easy trips to the store, doctor's office, park, or church, even after we retire from our cars. The goal of lower housing prices helps us downshift from full-time work to retirement without stress, and purposeful connectivity allows us to maintain loving relationships, which are foundational to good health long into our golden years. For these reasons, we wish to share our thanks for your work to create this vision, and we are eager to see the fruits of this labor continue to benefit the residents of Columbus for years to come. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to bring any questions you may have to our team for a response.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Ryan Castle, and after Mr. Castle we will have Ms. Beth Long. Welcome back to council.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me, Protam Doran and city councilmembers. My name is Ryan Castle, I work for Community Housing Network. We develop permanent supportive housing for individuals who have been homeless, have a disability, oftentimes mental health disability. We have about 1,500 units in Franklin County, and I just want to applaud the city for this vision for growth, of build a future that provides opportunities for all residents. The inclusivity and equity implied in this statement makes clear that Columbus is a caring community, and that understands that its success depends upon all residents having access to opportunity, and that we strongly support this vision. I have a letter with a lot more thoughts on the Growth Strategy, but in general, just extremely supportive of what you're trying to do. But I do have a few comments related to design guidelines, two of which relate to costs. In general residential design guidelines, building material, number three, one of the materials that is not discussed is siding, vinyl siding. In some contexts, in some communities, vinyl siding does actually make sense and would fit within the community context, and when we're developing our housing, it's very important to be contextual in terms of the design, so I do encourage the city to include less expensive materials and not just the higher-quality, higher-cost materials that are mentioned. Building articulation is another place where there might be some softening of the language to allow for other options to articulate buildings and help lower costs in terms of building housing. The last two comments I have are specific to permanent supportive housing, one of which is visible open spaces. Oftentimes, neighborhoods ask us to put our open spaces in the rear of our properties, which. which we will do when asked. They're concerned with the appearance of our residents loitering, and we don't consider it loitering, but that's their words, not mine. And so, in these situations, we would negotiate putting public spaces in the back for buildings, and so I would like to have that as an option going forward as we develop this housing and work with our neighbors to have them embrace our housing. And then the last thing is that permanent supportive housing often has a single entry, and it is difficult to have a single entry when you have mobility-impaired folks. You want to be as close to where they're coming in, which oftentimes is at the parking lot, to have that also face the public street. So, maybe having some flexibility around entrances for certain types of housing would be helpful.
Thank you very much. That's, again, very helpful and actionable things for our team to review. Really appreciate that. Thanks for being here. Next speaker come for council is Ms. Beth Long. After Ms. Long, we have Erin Wasserman. Hey, welcome to council.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Thank you, President Pro Tem Dorans, other council members. My name is Beth Long. I am the Vice President of Originations at OCCH, which is a nonprofit based here in Columbus. Its mission is to advance the preservation, production, and management of affordable housing through collaborative partnership and innovative thought leadership. OCCH works across a 12-state footprint, and we have gained insights in how various communities work to address national housing supply shortages and affordability challenges. At OCCH, we are all proud to know that our hometown of Columbus remains a leader and innovator in addressing these concerns. The recent 500 million Affordable Housing Bond will create and preserve affordability for thousands of families while providing resources and policies to deter eviction and ensure that small setbacks don't spiral into homelessness. In addition to my work at OCCH, I'm also a resident of the city of Columbus, as well as a graduate of the OSU City and Regional Planning Master's Program. So, as such, I am very glad to see the city developing this city growth strategy. I think it's an important and welcome step forward in meeting Columbus's growing housing needs. I especially appreciate the goal of establishing one consistent predictable planning tool as opposed to the over 40 neighborhood plans currently utilized. I'm glad to see the strategy welcome mixed-use communities that incubate small businesses, job opportunities, cultural attractions, parks, and affordable housing. The strategy also promotes both revitalization and preservation, which I think is key for cities such as ours, so we can build upon existing infrastructure without sprawling further, keeping both commutes and housing prices more manageable. I applaud the purposeful and engaged way the strategy tool was developed, and I thank you for your time and your continued commitment to addressing current housing challenges while creating a welcoming and accessible community for all of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the advocacy. Next speaker come for council, Mr. Aaron Wasserman, and after Mr. Wasserman, we have Clarence Simmons.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your time and letting me speak today. I'm speaking, I guess, both individually as a resident of Columbus and also on behalf of Homeport, which is where I work. Homeport's a nonprofit organization that works throughout Columbus and Franklin County, developing affordable housing and also operating other programs in community development more broadly, here to offer support for this plan. I think the city council, the administration, the development department are doing an excellent job on coordinating citywide and regionally. There have been a lot of efforts over the past five or more years to promote more housing, to promote more flexible neighborhoods. I think we at Homeport are very glad to see the phased approach that you're taking, starting on corridors and then considering other neighborhoods or areas of the city more broadly. I also think the department deserves a lot of credit for thinking about how office and industrial properties are changing. I think people want to live in mixed-use neighborhoods, broadly speaking, perhaps not everyone, I realize, and I think the city's doing an important job thinking about how historically industrial or commercial areas or properties probably will want to change over time, particularly if they're adjacent to longer-standing residential neighborhoods. I'll end by saying that, you know, the research, I think, is pretty clear nationally that more homes across a wide range of types of homes in terms of their shape, in terms of their density, and also in terms of their price points is what is needed to give options, allow people to choose where they want to live, and also try to, you know, mitigate housing costs throughout Columbus. So, thanks for the work you're doing. I am speaking broadly. I guess I don't have any particular, specific, detailed questions, but I think Homeport wants to just continue to support the work that the city council and others are doing to support housing throughout Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the advocacy and certainly Homeport's work all across Columbus, bringing housing to our residents. Next, we have Mr. Clarence Simmons, and after Mr. Simmons, we have Ms. Mindy Justice. Welcome back to council, sir.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Dorans. Thank you, members of council. We appreciate you taking the time. And gentlemen, I got to say, sorry, my back is turned to you. Thank you very much. You've done a great job. This is really very comprehensive, so. With that being said, we are a small, Simmons Corporation, Simco Construction, we're a small boutique firm here and out that develops and builds affordable housing, and we have been for 18 years. We've been a part of projects such as Point Dexter, Legacy Point, River and Rich, and we're very proud to represent the city and be the developers and builders for Sawyer Towers next year. So, thank you again for being wildly comprehensive, but at the same time, being flexible. That's what I heard. Flexible, community process, inclusivity, and, you know, I think it's all coming together. Over the years, I've seen the Green Line link us. We do a great deal of our work in Linden. I saw Ms. Peggy, so. And we will keep on doing that work in Linden and wherever it's so important, whether it's to link transportation with housing and such whatever, and then a plan that's comprehensive and flexible for small builders, developers like myself. I can't speak for all, but I got to say, it really encourages us to say, this is, we're moving in the right direction. And obviously, with council, your hard work and Mayor Ginter's hard work to make sure we pass a bond levy, so therefore we can produce more affordable housing. Can't say the good things. I'm looking at the body of work, and it's body of work, you guys, every single year, you're bringing something out that's different, that's great, and not just in development, but also housing needs, eviction needs, things of that sort of whatever. So, thank you very much for taking the time. I know it's been a painstaking process, but with that being said, all good things will come about. So, thank you again. If you have any questions for myself or anyone, please let me know, but I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate talking about all the efforts on housing holistically. A lot going all at once.
For sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ms. Mindy Justice, and after Mindy, we'll have Scott Kaplan. Welcome back to council.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Dorans, council member, and city staff, who I was joking that I saw them more than I saw my own roommate recently while we were all out and about in community together. So, thank you for this opportunity to share. I'm a co-founder of Neighbors for More Neighbors Columbus. But outside of that, to add some of the kind of Jason Sudey type of theme here, I'm a longtime Columbus kid and someone who has worked in civics, engagement, in housing, and transportation for nearly 20 years. I'm here tonight wearing all of those hats because they're really important and really wanting to champion and congratulate us for getting this far and recommend we continue to keep the foot on the gas, if you will. I do want to acknowledge that this work is not easy, and that's why I really take the extra time to give the applause to the dedication of staff and the dedication of the mayor's team to continuing to see this through, because truly, this has to be a big, multi-year effort. These things take time. These are painstaking conversations. It's absolutely critical. So, the growth strategy I see here tonight, the updates I've been hearing, are really important. They are exactly what the doctor ordered. We need flexibility in land use, not rigid prescriptions. We need a nice, comprehensive package of suggestions and policy recommendations that people can use for many years to come that are not as time-bound. And we need a clear path for transitioning legacy industrial land. That is something that is a high priority, given the changing nature of our times. So, I will keep it very brief and just say that as someone who grew up here in Columbus and as someone who has felt firsthand the effects of limited housing supply, rising costs, slow land use adaptation, I know how important it is that we plan proactively and intentionally. I'm really proud to support this legislation and continue to be proud of how our city continues to prioritize and take really important steps during a pivotal time in our history. So, I really want to extra, I know I've already done it twice, so three times the charm, applaud council staff, or applaud city staff, because you guys have just been everywhere, and I really appreciate the engagement. Any questions?
No, just, again, appreciate you continuing to be engaged in this process, and, again, a compliment to lots of folks on the city staff's side. They have been everywhere and will be everywhere, particularly over the next several years as well as we move through this process. Thank you. So, always nice when staff gets a compliment, sometimes.
As civil servants, I understand it.
Yes. Thank you very much. Again, next speaker come for council is Mr. Scott Kaplan. After Mr. Kaplan, we'll have Mr. Trent Smith. Welcome to council.
Hello, my name is Scott Kaplan. I want to thank council for the opportunity to speak. I am a professor at the Ohio State University. I am a graduate of the University of Pennsylvania Graduate School of Fine Arts, which includes art, architecture, historic planning, and city planning and historic preservation. I was Andy's art teacher. I represent neighbors. I was President Harden's neighbor for over a decade. I'm a collaborator. I received Councilmember Beroso Dupedia's 614 Neighborhood Grant in enhancing my own sort of neighborhood. I think my credentials with regard to the commitment to the neighborhood that I live are impeccable. I am the Vice President of the Woodland Park Neighborhood Association, for which I'm speaking about today. I wanted to come in front of council to describe that I am not proposing an action plan, but I am proposing an inaction plan. The proposed development along Taylor Avenue is significant and would have dramatic impacts on the neighborhood residents. The proposal is inclusive of building up to seven stories. Taylor Avenue is a two-lane road that connects from 670 to OSU East Hospital. I don't know if anyone has experienced being stuck behind a school bus and an ambulance on a two-lane road, but adding a seven-story residential tower in association, which is not proportional to the surrounding one-story and two-story housings, I don't think is appropriate and reflective of that community. Last time when Zone 1 was being completed, NEAC Representative Katie Curdussoza, who was chair at the time, brought an announcement to the public days, not weeks or months, to get community feedback. She was great in initiating that, but the portrayal of active community engagement within the communities that are going to be significantly affected, I don't think is necessarily active, and I think better outreach for those communities could be engaged. I'm finding that this is sort of a repeated habit for some types of engagement. The Homeport person brought proposals to us just Monday, and we went to NEAC on Thursday. NEAC was not sufficiently aware of the fact that this was going on and made an announcement so that I was able to attend this process this evening. So, I think certain communities have been more engaged and were made more aware of the process than others, but I am all for the efficiencies that were described here, but not necessarily just for exigency. I think that engagement and thoughtful moving forward, such as the engagement I'm talking about with regard to the Taylor Avenue, would be really appreciated by the communities that are being served by it.
Yeah. Point taken, and we'll make sure we follow up. We'll have your information to make sure we have the zoning team follow up with you.
Fantastic. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Next speaker come for council, Mr. Trent Smith, and our last speaker will be Ms. Als Fuller.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Dorans and Councilmember Dayakar. Nice to see you. My name is Trent Smith. I am the Executive Director of Franklinton Board of Trade. We also manage and operate the Franklinton Special Improvement District, and I'm a resident of the neighborhood. So, I live, eat, breathe, sleep, do all things in Franklinton. And I could make these comments based on any of those hats that I just described. And I have some things I want to say, but I also want to start with this. I'm always interested to hear some of the concerns that people have expressed, some of the ones tonight, especially the young woman that talked about the concerns with the school. And while I support this plan and all the things that it will do, I also am sensitive to those types of, like, very specific concerns. And so, the one thing I'd like to say is that I hope that the identification of flexibility in the key points really does mean that, that we can be thoughtful about taking a look at these really unique situations, like the ones that were described, and make sure that those neighborhoods can be taken care of in a thoughtful way. As far as what we are interested in the most, increased allowances for a variety of housing that would include accessory dwellings. Franklinton is kind of ground zero for the need for housing, and the variety of housing that will be allowed with this Columbus Growth Strategy and Zone-In are very encouraging for the neighborhood. We need that density. We need that on Broad Street, and we need it sooner than later. And so, anything that we can do to encourage that and speed that up is something that we want to support. We also like the fact that it will provide for a path to transition legacy industrial to mixed use and encourage outdated job sites to become mixed use for both jobs and housing. People often ask me, like, what do you want in Franklinton the most? Do you want business development? Do you want residential development? And I always say, I want both at the same time. I'm greedy that way, but I want both at the same time, and I think that this plan will allow that to take place. And I also think that it's going to allow for a wider imagination of what development can look like in not just our neighborhood, but all over Columbus. We just really feel encouraged by what this is going to allow, and the variety of uses that can come with this is something that we really want to see in Franklinton, because as the most mature neighborhood in central Ohio, there is so much of the retail and the small businesses that we have lost over the years for all the obvious reasons that we just simply need to get back. And of course, the most key point to all of this to us is creating jobs for residents of Franklinton, getting them to the jobs, having the jobs there, making it so that they can get to them, earn a good living, pay their rent, shop at the stores in Franklinton, and have that cyclical support that we all need so much. So, with that, all in my comments, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Thanks for being here. And our last speaker come for council is Ms. Als Fuller. Als, welcome back to council.
Good evening, Councilmember, Council President Pro Tem Dorans, Councilmember, oh, Dayakar. Great to see you. My name is Als Fuller. I'm coming here as the President of the Northland Area Business Association, and this is certainly the most abstract and philosophical phase of Zone-In, which I like, actually, but wanted to say, you know, the old plans, Northland Plan 1 and Northland Plan 2, up in Northland, we've tended to use those as our shield when someone comes in and says, I'd like to take this church with a bunch of mature trees on it and put a dollar store here with an asphalt parking lot. And we're like, no, Northland Plan 1 says you can't do that. So, it's good to know that this is a well-thought-out strategy and that the parcel-by-parcel conversations will still be happening. What I'd like people to keep in mind is that, you know, the thinking has changed about zoning. Zoning was originally to keep things separate, you know, like your parks go over here, and your houses go over here, and your stores go over here, and keep people separate, you know? The apartment people go over here, and the single-family home people go over here. And I think we're now experiencing in our society what happens when people are siloed from each other, and people stay in their houses and have their food delivered, and they don't interact with each other. And that's what we're living through right now, is this disconnection, and it's not good for humans. It makes sense to modernize, and I'm confident that the city staff will continue to work closely with the area commissions and NCC as they have heroically. I know Mr. Teba has been on 8:00 PM Zoom calls with, in Northland, we formed our own Zone-In committee, ad hoc committee, that meets monthly whether anything's going on or not, and the city staff have been incredibly generous about attending and getting down to the southwest corner of whatever street that this particular house is on a commercial corridor. I have nothing but confidence that that kind of dedication will continue. And on the topic of income tax and our office behavior, our behavior around offices, where people work, where they earn their living, which definitely determines where their income tax goes, as the co-founder of Elevate Northland... tax goes, as the co-founder of Elevate Northland, which is a nonprofit that has taken a warehouse, and we're building classrooms into it, thank you for Monday night, continuing to support that, building out coworking offices, co-warehousing opportunities, that's the kind of future flexibility that this sort of growth strategy supports, and being able to repurpose things, make things into smaller bits. You know, we may not have a giant company that's going to have 400 employees working in an office building, but we can certainly create spaces for people to work, to connect with each other, and to still have their income taxes be in the city of Columbus. So that's the future, and I'm glad to be part of it, and thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming. I think you hit the nail on the head about this being the big philosophical start of this all, and it's like exciting, but also, you know, when we're talking about the first phase of zoning, you know, here's the zoning district, here's what you can do, and this is a little bit removed from that, right? We're sort of at the beginning of that process, nowhere near the end. So this is, we're talking about engagement, making sure that folks can understand philosophically what's sort of going on here and why. Just, it's great to have the engagement, so many leaders across the city like yourself to sort of help people digest that, because this is not, this can be a little more abstract, and it's necessary for folks to take the time to really see how that can translate into what will come next, and ultimately, what will come before council after lots and lots and lots of community engagement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That is the final public speaker we have for tonight's committee hearing. Also, I neglected to mention, to thank Laura Baker Morris, the General Counsel for the City Attorney, who joined us here tonight as well. Appreciate, again, city staff for their work getting here, certainly Kevin McCain from the Legislative Research Office, our folks from city staff, certainly Mark Travillis and Louis Teba, for helping to lead this effort. If folks are interested in learning more generally about the modernization efforts to rezone Columbus, you can look at columbus.gov/zoningupdate. Also, if individuals have specific questions for me, you can get ahold of me at my email address, which is radorans@columbus.gov. As it stands, the zoning team has submitted proposed legislation to council, will be considered later this month, and it will be considered in December for a vote. So that will be likely at a regular scheduled council meeting in middle of December. So we still have additional time for folks to provide comments with individuals regarding questions, concerns around this. But again, this is sort of the starting point, certainly not the end as we head towards the next phase of Zoning. Do you want to? Oh, I apologize. We do have one last public speaker. Ms. Peg is here. Commissioner, welcome back to council. Great to see you.
I want to thank you for allowing me to do this. I have been so impressed with all the comments that have been made so far.
Ms. Peg, if you want to grab the microphone just so we get you.
I say, thank you for allowing me to do this, and I acknowledge, you know, Ms. Nancy, and acknowledge you as well, but I appreciate all the comments that have been said tonight in support of this Columbus Growth Strategy Plan proposal, because for me, I felt like we were at the, you know, the Southland and Area Commission was at the ground level back in 2018, beginning this process with our One Linden Plan, and you always want to have a plan that's not going to sit on the shelf. And for me, that's what this Columbus strategy, you know, growth strategy does. It works as a complement, because it'll be something that won't sit on the shelf, because every year we'll have an opportunity in order to have say, because one of the fears was that the zoning process would take away our involvement as area commissions to have a say in how development occurs. But with this proposal for the Columbus Growth Strategy, it really opens it up. And for me, thinking about going back to 2019 and 2020, the pandemic exposed a lot of truth in how everything really works together, you know, intersects with each other, and that's what I see this Columbus Growth Strategy Plan doing, recognizing that you have that intersectionality that happens. So for me, I take it personal, so that's, I can only speak as, you know, a resident right now, but I'm proud to say that the Southland and Area Commission did vote unanimously to give its support to the Columbus Growth Strategy Plan, so thanks.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Effectually knows Ms. Peg. Thank you, and apologize for not getting up here earlier. Great to see you. And I think what Ms. Peg said is so incredibly important, when we talk about we have a legacy system under our old code, and what we're trying to do is modernize this. And I said, if I said this once during the first phase, I've probably said it over 1,000 times, is that these are the times to engage. We want to make sure our commissioners, that have been such great stewards of their neighborhood and community leaders, now is the time to really engage with the city on what the future looks like. So rather than spending countless hours on one project here and one thing here, now is the time really to think about how are we going to shape the future of neighborhoods and the city at large. And just, it's, so appreciate you, Commissioner, and so many folks across the community that have taken that charge so seriously, because it's not about taking folks' voice away. It's about making sure, let's amplify folks' voice now, to make sure that that is something that carries on for the years and decades to come as Columbus continues to change. So thank you again for the comments. As I was saying, if folks are interested in learning more about the growth strategy and zoning generally, you can go to columbus.gov/zoningupdate. Folks have questions for me specifically. Best way to get ahold of me is my email, which is radorans@columbus.gov. As I was mentioning, this legislation will be submitted to council and will likely be considered for a vote in the middle of December. Councilmember, I don't know if you have any closing remarks you'd like to make?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out on a dark evening, when you could be home, comfortable, eating dinner, and just coming to share your thoughts on this, because this is important work, and we can't do it without your voices. So thank you all for coming out this evening.
Thank you, our council member. And on that note, I'm going to run home to my kiddo's bedtime. So with that, the hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.